Welcome everyone. Now, welcome everyone. Thursday, September fourteenth. Timothée Select Board Meeting. We have a whole bunch of people here. It's very exciting. It's normally just us and a handful of others. So fun. First on the list is we're going to review our agenda. Anything, we've already got you all first thing, so. I don't think we need to move anything up. Is Devon coming? Do we know?
Devon is not, but I have an email message.
You have an email? Okay, lovely. Alright. Anybody want to add anything or just to agree? By consensus to approve it?
There are some. There's a feedback form that I haven't gotten.
Okay. But we'll read it at the end. Okay, lovely.
That's nothing that has to happen early.
Great. Alright, minutes. You guys have any comments on the minutes? I didn't.
Good.
I will undertake a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second it.
All in favor? Hi. Citizens input? Would anybody here or on Zoom like to speak?
Do we want to introduce everybody on here and in here so that everybody knows?
Sure. That sounds good. We'll start with you, sir.
Just sitting in my chair. Chris Martin.
Tom Davis, one-two teacher at Timothée.
Jane Galusha, three-fourth teacher at Timothée.
Jan Krantz.
Colin DePice, editor.
Adam, assistant at Timothée.
Joan Mutsuka, I'm a reading interventionist at Timothée.
And Melissa Van Ganger.
Maureen Fitzgerald, like a prince, wants to meet.
You want us to introduce ourselves? Mariana Gilmore. Madam Squire.
Kevin Eaton.
And those on Zoom, introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, David Birdsall, and I have a citizen input whenever we're ready.
Sherry Johnson.
Beryl Balfour was on there.
Yeah, she's not there now.
She's the best friend for Timothée.
There you go.
She's the one-two.
Alright, and. Yeah, how's everyone? Alright. David, you had a citizens input?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to publicly commend Kevin and Alex for making, helping out with the Mill River Fire. They were the representative Timothée Fire Department there and eleven loads. What'd you say, Kevin? Two hundred, counting everybody, two hundred thousand gallons of water was put on it?
Just the big tankers. That's not counting the little ones.
That's right. Yeah. And just thanking Kevin and Alex for, you know, being there from basically all afternoon and evening. So, thank you, guys. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Ray, we are just finishing up citizens input. If you had anything you wanted to add? Okay, lovely. Alright, then we'll move on. A new classroom for the school.
The owl will catch you anyway.
The school is, since we had, since I started nine years ago, we put in a two, three, a three-year-old, four-year-old program, which created the need for an additional classroom, additional teacher. We also, the population has gone from forty-eight thousand to seven, eight thousand, forty-eight students to seventy students. And it's overcrowded. When we have specialist teachers, when we have occupational therapists, speech pathologists, counselors, art teachers, music teachers, Pton teachers, they're scrambling for space. We use the closet in PE room, we use my office. The nurses station was already turned into a room during COVID that isolates kids if they happen to have some contagious. So, all these factors, we had the fact that we are wicked overcrowded. And so, I was given an opportunity by the district to use Acer funds to expand building. Not expand the building, these are governing funds. We can't use them to put like additional on the building because they're federal funds and they need to be used for district buildings. And since we don't own the building, that's not an option. So, I looked into an additional classroom. Came up with the Vermont, it's through Efficiency Vermont. It can be moved, but it's not really considered a temporary building. It's a prefabricated building. It can be put on pillars, but we're preferred to put it on a slab or a foundation of some kind across these. And which makes it pretty immobile. It can be moved if it needs to be. It comes up in two parts, in a, on two truckloads, and then they put them together. The features, I asked, I actually, let me back up. I asked the architects and the builders, how long this building lasts? And they told me like a stiff building about a hundred years. So, it's, that's another reason why I wouldn't consider it temporary. So, that's the life expectancy. One of the positive things about the building is that it's really well insulated. It's air sealed, all electric and energy star, zero net energy. It's certified through Efficiency Vermont at a 3.0, and the buildings provide excellent indoor air quality and conform with local recovery ventilation. So, apparently they're very energy efficient. The pictures that I gave you have a solar panel on top. The bid that we got is not included solar panel. I just wanted to put that out there. We would like to build this, and the district would have to come up with the additional funding. Because it's, we have a hundred and twenty thousand from the grant, that's it. So, we would have to go to the board for the additional costs, which are probably double. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a bit of work to get this in place. We need a construction manager, we need to have a site evaluation. Because it has to be hooked up to the sewer and the electric. My estimate is the best place to put it after talking to several people would be between the school as it exists now and the church. Because that, that puts it in directly with the septic system and the water system, which they move to their runways. It'll be separate, but it'll be right next to it. Well, there's a shed there now that will probably, and the equipment will probably be moved to another location. So, it'll be pretty close because it needs to be within walking distance. And there's like a level of area at that point rather than putting it up on the hill.
What about fire? Like, has it, will it be tied into the the fire alarm system that's currently in the building or will it have its own?
I'm guessing it'll have its own because we're having a problem with the fire system working. So, I would, I would probably recommend that it set up its own system at this point. Unless they, you know, redo the whole system in the, in community center.
Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, that too, yeah. Just to try and get the ventilation into it, but that's another, that's another story. So, at this point, it's not a given that it's a go-ahead. It is a request. But what I'm being told is before we can go to the board, before we hire a construction manager, before we can hire a site manager, we need to at least get permission from the town to locate it in between the church and the building. And that this would be an acceptable structure on the property. So, that's why.
And what would you need from the town besides our approval to do this?
Just your approval at this point.
Yeah.
Most of the, the funding will come from the district and they will manage the entire place. Is my understanding. If it's approved, the board can come up with the funding to supplement the hundred-one K.
So, if if the union dissolve, then would they take the building or leave the building? Then it can talk about, because these structures belong to the town.
My understanding is normally when a town, when, when a school pulls out of a town, leaves a building, so they relocate their school, they usually sell the building to the town. This is like a reverse. I'm thinking we would probably, I would guess that we would sell it to the town. So, because it is a somewhat permanent structure. But I think that's important. I think that needs to be documented.
And Acer funding is the same as our ARPA funding? Is that my understanding? Acer money is like federal?
Grant money that they could have. It's Acer two after the COVID to support getting the kids back up to speed. And at this point, the building, it, we have a year to build it because the grant money, if we don't spend it by next September, is gone. And it took us this long to get through the AOE approval of the grant for, to start. And then we had to get a second approval because it was a construction project through AOE and the state as well.
So, if we give you the go-ahead to do this, are you gonna have enough time? It's gonna be tight.
Well, actually, I, I heard if we get that, it's made already. It's, so when they bring it up.
They work on the concrete and utilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Which now can
Yeah, but by the, we can get a site assessment. We can get, you know, the the pad put in. And then they can bring it up.
You might want to try and get the site assessment this fall.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan, yeah. As well as, you know, to make sure that we have the permits for the sewer and the water as well.
And where do you want to put it? Sorry, I have an emergency I have to do.
In between the school and the church where the basketball court is and the temporary building that will store shit.
Well, that lines you up to the, if you have to go to the second tank and while they drive by.
And so, do you think the district's gonna come up with money for engineering and slabs and?
They're aware of it. I made them, you know, aware, and they knew that when they, the grant was first, you know, when we first requested the money. So, they knew it was gonna probably cost more than a hundred and twenty thousand because I, the bid is what went to the like the big from Efficiency Vermont, wrote up the costs and estimate, and that went through to the state and to the to the actual approval of the grant. So, they're aware that they have to come up with it. And when I request, I asked the superintendent where the difference was going to come from. He said, we have to go to the board. And that often they have a fund in the building and grounds for unexpected costs. I'm not sure how big that, that fund is, but that's, that's the plan. Not to go on to the It's a thousand square feet, so it's forty by twenty-six? Yeah, forty by twenty-six. That's twenty. Bathroom, sink, cabinets.
You're not gonna get that filled for a hundred and twenty thousand on that.
I know. I know. I'm thinking done with that. But they should be aware of that. You know, I mean, that's what I'm saying. The, the bid came in at a hundred and sixty-four, a hundred and eighty-four.
Is that just for the buildings or does it include your deck as well? Because sometimes that's an additional cost.
Probably. It's gonna be additional cost. They do have to have some kind of ADD, ADA
Yeah.
Approval, so I'm assuming that the ramp is included. I can look it up.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, for our end, if it's not costing us any money, how you figure out how to afford it is not necessarily our problem as long as it you know, the only concerns I would have is just to make sure that it is, I'm sure the district would want the same thing to make sure that it's engineered well and
They have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Required to.
The insurance company will come in and also the fire marshal will inspect it. So, it's gotta pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it has to be ADA approved. It has to have that.
Yeah, I just, it was more of a, you know, cautionary thing to be aware of.
Yeah.
This feels like pretty low risk for the town to say go try to see if this is possible, but I don't know how you two feel about this? Are they gonna need to go before the planning commission for any of this or?
If they meet the setback requirements, they can reschedule for it. It's been seventy-five feet from the middle of the road and thirty-five feet from here is probably
I don't know where the church line is, but church sits on town land anyway.
Right.
So, then there's a back.
Okay.
So, we just
Resuming the management.
Is that, is that you? Is that you?
No, the state will prove the septic. Not that the engineer figure out how to attach everything into the existing system.
Right. That's just part of the, the process that we're probably doing this fall.
With a mound, it's easy. If you just go into the tank.
Yeah.
So, they don't go into that first tank. They'll have to decide size and
Yeah. Do you have any more questions? No?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Sherry.
I'd like to know how the aesthetics of the building will fit with our town center. Because I don't, I, I don't know what it looks like, but how will that fit in with the church and the school and all that stuff?
I don't know if you're able to see this, but
Would be the same.
It's under your packet.
Okay, I see. Okay.
So, he just painted the same color. Could blend in pretty well.
But it's gonna be closed.
It looks
Yeah.
The point is, it doesn't look like, like a
A trailer.
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
It's not Gothic.
This is a bit too boring, but would you need something in writing from them to stay up to date? That they will?
I think it would be in minutes.
Okay, because when you don't want to get there and have, you know.
Yes, yeah, I could write something up. I think if I took a copy, it was a good one. That would suffice.
I think the only thing we might want to make sure is that there's an agreement of some sort as to what happens within
If the school was
If all the kids that are coming here, that are extra kids, decide to go someplace else, you know what's gonna happen with it?
Right.
And we do have a liaison with the district, right? So, we can hopefully liaise about this as it moves forward and all be communicating about it. So, we're on the same Well, well, Gail and originally Kathy were meeting with the district with the superintendent and
About the
The original agreement.
Agreement from two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
Needs some updating, so.
Right. We can just include that and continue to communicate about it as it moves forward.
Yeah, we can actually add that to the agreement if it's rewritten. The, but it goes back, goes back to the town.
Anyone else who's here or on Zoom want to say anything about this? Ray?
I'm Ray Pratt, I'm from the church, and I heard there was a bit of an interest in possibly using the community run down the street of the church. Wonder if that's not preferable anymore or if it's the fallback option?
It's the fallback option because we're not sure if the, the space isn't as big and we're not sure if the, there's, there's a lot of work to be done as far as if there's asbestos and the there has to be an agreement on the rent. And also, the last that I spoke to the church, I was told that they didn't want to rent it more than one day a week. And then I spoke to Ken again, and he's still bringing it to the trustee board to see if they want to, you know, rent it for five days a week and come up with a figure, you know, for doing that sort of thing. And if they can get someone to update it if it is asbestos and do some of the other repair works that
And I think all of that's true. I think, I think that five days a week can be fine. And depending upon the cost, we don't have unlimited funds, but doing the work in the church, we would invite that and invite you all to be there and try and get to work.
Because the district, like when I, I assumed at the start that erroneously, that the district would be willing to fix up the church because they were using it. And most I think they're gonna do is put in they met with the fire marshal, has put in CO2 wire for CO2 detectors, and that's, that's the extent. So, I'm still waiting to see if that, you know, is gonna be feasible or not. Because there hasn't been a trustee in the union since, yeah.
Obviously, yes. I, I think, well, I think what we need to do would be to pursue the cost of repairs and see if we have the funds to pull that off.
Okay.
So, it's, so it's still, still talking about it. If it was low interest, if you're in, then we would not pursue it heartily, but if it's higher interest, we will work at it.
I, okay, now that I have the approval, I can probably let you know, you know, sooner than later. Because the district is gonna have to make a decision about whether they're gonna, they need to start moving on this rather quickly. And they need to commit the finances to do that, to get a site manager, to get, you know, an assessment of the site, to get permits and that sort of thing. So, that's gotta happen in the next month, you know, I would say. So, I would definitely keep you in the loop on that. Okay.
Did you have something else you wanted to add? I saw your hand up. Oh.
I had talked to Ken Krantz today. He stopped today. And so, I was happy that Ray stepped up and said, yes, the church would love to have him over there.
Lovely.
So, that, you have a plan B. You know, if this, the price of this thing goes to three hundred and fifty thousand and the district isn't really come up with that extra couple hundred thousand, then maybe they can find some money to work on making that a classroom instead of just for music.
And you said that cost was without, without the solar array or with the solar? Without solar.
And it's a hundred and sixty-four thousand bid, but I know it's been, this is like a year or two old, so I know it's gonna be more than that. And the other piece too is and it gives us a bargaining chip if they decide that they can't come up with that money. And I think the only reason might be because it, the board is consisted of other schools as well. They may not, you know, like they want, you know, to give that kind of money to one school. And if that's the scenario, then the hundred and twenty thousand goes back to the district to use on anything that was covered by the grant. So, that gives us a bargaining chip to be able to say, well, you know, we're giving you back a hundred and twenty thousand, give us rent for the, the church, I think. So, that, that's why we have a plan B. So, it's all depending on whether they're gonna fund this and
Okay. Well, would either of you like to make a motion?
Sure, make a motion that we give them the permission to go forward with this project.
First, we're adding an addition, well, additional buildings. I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi. Hi. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. It was a great show of like, this is really needed. It was great. Do you want your color prints back? Oh, yeah.
I was gonna take it home.
Get these back to Green. No, that one was like the other. Marine. Why don't you keep those and then if you need them for the school board? Keep a copy here. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Alright. Alright, Devon, send an email?
Devon sent an email and said you won't be here. Sounds, I had sent him an email with the suggestions that you had from the last meeting about, you know, on our list of other things. And says, it sounds like there's some good ideas floating around that we could use some of this funding to really flesh out and hopefully find a project that's a good fit. Given this information, I'd suggest that the Select Board formally votes to accept the MTP program assistance from your RPC. We could spend some time better defining the projects through a community needs assessment. So, you're still not totally committed to it? If you say yes, then you can move forward.
I would make a motion that we vote to pursue this funding opportunity, that we accept the funding opportunity.
The MTP.
MTP funding opportunity.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
I did have a thought about that. And maybe this doesn't fall in line, but I know Eric has been looking for a paving class to take. So, I didn't know if maybe it would help with some of those classes that our, our road foreman or road crew might benefit from. Because I know AOT has quite a few of those, but I don't know if there's a partnership there or not for taking some of that stuff.
We have money in the budget for
Okay.
People to take. We encourage employing these two.
Yeah, but I just didn't know if, if this might be a good one to, we call it the VTTC, but if, if we, it might be a way to partner with that just to access some of those programs.
Certainly worth looking into. Mosquitoes are out again.
They never went away.
Alright, was there anything else for that? Yeah, did we have any other? That was the holy moly.
We just sent the same thing that you handed out last time.
Okay. Lovely.
That had, you know, the, the thing about the scope of work for Timothée.
Yeah, I remember that.
Because you've got that. He's got the last month planned, if you don't mind considering.
Okay. Painting the old garage. So, we only were able to get the RFP out on Front Porch Forum. Is that correct, Gail?
And the Senator, Kevin, would you fill it out?
I instantly sent it to me.
So, the question is
It's due on Tuesday, Kevin.
Do we?
So, we don't have any bids?
We don't have any bids to open.
We don't have any bids to open.
And do we want to send it to other people other than Kevin? We didn't really know anyone else to send it to last time.
We were gonna send it to Magic Brush, but I didn't get it together.
Okay.
Sick last weekend.
Oh, yeah.
So, I will
So, do we want to push this another?
Well, yes, you decided when you want to get done this fall or
Well, I thought we had a completion date of next year.
Right, do. You're, you're Yeah. It is, depending, but the weather's weird.
Yeah.
Way weird. Who knows what October is gonna be like?
Right.
So, potentially could still get started on it.
Yeah. So, we'll just push this to October?
The bids to be due on October twelve?
Bids to be due to be opened on October twelfth. Yeah, that's our next meeting.
Just want to say, I posted it in three public places. We put it on Front Porch Forum. And nobody responded and Eric, Kevin, I don't know.
That might be the quickest option if we really want anything done this year.
Are you gonna postpone it, by the way? Is it all gonna be one color?
I, I only priced out winter green. I didn't price out the cream. But, but theoretically, I can, if I don't need all the green, I can substitute it with cream.
And I think technically, we would still need to see like how much it's gonna cost and like an RFP from
Well, he has
I'll do it.
He has a estimate from last time of like sixty-two hundred dollars.
Six thousand
Six, yeah.
Eight hundred and nine dollars.
Right. Bid to confirm.
Yeah.
It was to ascend.
That ninety cents is important.
I mean, this
That's my profit. But I, but so I estimated high on the paint and I estimated high on the primer. And I'm getting everything in gallons and not five gallons because I opened up a five gallon, I can't return it. I open up, so if I do everything in gallons, I can return. do everything in gallons, I can return what I don't use. So I may be able to substitute either primer or paint for cream. And still be able to stay within that price and two-tone it.
Well, I just asked that because when I went down by the other day, some is brown and some is not, so I didn't know if you're just gonna make everything. And we didn't, we didn't specify.
I wouldn't do the, the trim until after the green was all done anyway. So if I am gonna do it, I'll do the green, find out where I'm at with material, return what I can and get cream to trim it out.
Do you feel like waiting till the twelfth's too late? Would you start before that?
I would like to say yes.
Okay.
We're gonna have to accuse himself from his vote.
Yeah, I would like to say I, I would, I think so that I would probably be around the beginning of October. Starting on it. Yeah. But even if I two-tone it, I can still, pretty confident I can still stay within that price, only cause I went really high on my material.
Did we decide where these funds are coming from to pay for this? Right, and I don't remember having this much in it. Does it have? How much is in that fund? Does it have more than that? Maybe I'm remembering the wrong fund.
Capital Billy's one had like ten thousand or something like that.
Right, for the salt and sand shed.
So I think my estimate was like sixty-nine thousand.
I mean, I think in order to do this properly, we would need like the estimate broken, like you did send us that before, but we don't have that here right now to like approve, to say, yes, this is how much the project's gonna cost is, and this is what we're paying for.
Well, if it hasn't changed, I can print out what he sent us for, what was in your packet on the thirty-first.
Has anything changed? And you think, so are you, you think it's gonna be less than five gallons of a single color? I'm just thinking.
So I priced out ten, ten of paint.
Okay.
And ten of primer.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna take anywhere near that much on either one, but I went, I, I went high.
Yeah.
In case I ran into an issue.
Right.
So I'm pretty confident I'm gonna be returning some primer and some paint.
Do you mind, Gus, and like getting a copy of that, just?
Um.
So we can.
But what I was gonna do was, um, I was gonna return whatever primer, return whatever paint, take it off the bill to the town and then bill actual hours, cause I estimated my hours high and bill actual hours and drop the hours back to the actual number. So I'm billing the town for actual hours.
So it could cost less than the six thousand?
Most likely, yes. But two-toning it, you're adding in labor. No, yeah, no, I know, so not labor. You would own, and, and potentially not anything actually, cause if I'm returning, I'm gonna buy. Yeah.
What's your thoughts on this?
I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I mean, if he's got a shot to get started before October twelfth, that will just help us out and help him out in the spring, if there's any left to do.
And I trust him to go do right by the town, so he's got a vested interest in doing right, so.
I live right next door to him. Not gonna be too hard to track me down.
So I think if we have something to basically go off of, like what you sent in before, then I think we can approve that and go forward from that.
Let me just see a little print from his. Hopefully we can get through this meeting fairly quickly, um, my husband hesitated already to the emergency room, so.
Oh, it didn't go.
I know. You need to.
Do you go? Should we schedule?
We can.
Uh, another meeting later in the month?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. That's.
That would be appreciated.
Yeah, we can do that.
I move that we.
Well, let me just.
Yep, let's finish this. Let's look at our schedule, so maybe we could have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I've got two next week, but I don't believe I've got anything the week after, so.
The twenty-eighth?
Yep, that should work.
The twenty-eighth is the speed limit committee.
Okay, so twenty-sixth is the
solid waste, but we could probably bump that if, no, the twenty-sixth is speed.
Yep.
Twenty-eighth is.
Open.
Is the solid waste. We could bump the solid waste.
Okay.
So you wanna do twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so doing this, we still have to fill out the R F P.
No, we're gonna move to approve what you sent us before, and because it is under the ten thousand dollar bid requirement. We were doing it because you were a select board member and it felt a little weird, just like.
Yeah, no, that is kinda.
Given that we did put it out there and there was no response and.
Yeah, I had no problem putting it out there. Somebody else wanted to do it, go for it.
Yep. Well, we could probably make a motion to approve the original bid submitted by Kevin, um.
He had double emailing it to me.
Yeah, so I screen, I screenshotted it.
He screenshotted it and then, you know, it was turned out.
Yeah, it's a photo.
For some reason it would not email it from my text or from my notes, cause I did it in my notes. And I tried to email it from my notes and it kept saying something's secured and it would not do it. Yeah, a lot of iPhones.
Oh, well, I mean, half the time I can't even access my work email from my work phone.
Right.
All right, so we're going to approve.
So that was part of saying that I would return.
We're gonna approve your original bid.
Yes.
That you sent, submitted to the select board on the thirty-first. I will make a motion, she gets a chance. I'll make a motion that we accept the original bid that Kevin Eaton submitted for painting the old town garage.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we are going to, um, adjourn and reschedule for. Sorry, Gail.
Um, if you could maybe just go through, I don't think I added it on yours.
Yep.
We need to approve Pike's winter sand bed.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, that doesn't look bad to me.
Yeah. We have to.
Yeah, it's also ten thousand dollars that you give up, but we, they've already started planning this.
It was pretty close to last year's, wasn't it?
I ate something or other, um, eight forty, it's done. It's this right here.
Yeah, yeah, cause last year it was ten thousand something, I think.
Right.
You just say, I make a motion to approve Pike's winter sand mix at eight dollars and forty cents per unit or, or per ton?
Yeah.
Yep.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See if something up there.
They're gonna meet again on the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
On the twenty eighth. Yeah, pressing.
And I appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
We'll take care of your family.
Absolutely. Customer signature.
Yep, you're right. Sorry.
It's okay.
Trying to get you sign your own paper.
I mean. Goodness knows, I'm capable.
Ads and everything on, but somehow he got a ticket.
Yeah.
It's no joke.
So what did he get hit in the head with?
But I'll be almost.
All right, so we are moving to adjourn.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm home.
I'm just gonna drop off a copy of, um, the draft of the.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
I'll see you, see you in a couple minutes.
Very good, yep.
So, and I'll see you in the morning at some point to grab the ramps.
Perfect, thanks Kevin very much.
No problem.
Cool.